Okay. Okay, we're good to go, right? Right, Lynn? Okay, good evening. This is the November ninth, two thousand twenty-two special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of New Canaan, Connecticut. Lynn, can, we will not be taking public input tonight. That said, Lynn, can you describe how you run the call, please?
Um, so this is just a, a meeting of the commission, a special meeting, so we're not taking public comments and anyone who is watching the meeting on Zoom should have their video off. Only the commissioners that are on Zoom should be seen on the screen.
Okay, great, thank you. And, Misses, what I'm gonna do tonight is I'm going to seat people by specific application, so if I forget to do that, please remind me. Um, let's do a roll call. John Goodwin, I'm here. Kent Turner?
Here.
Uh, Dick Ward is not on Zoom, nor is he here. Um, Dan Radman not here yet, right? Okay, John Chris?
Here.
Claire Tascornia?
Here.
Krista Nielsen?
Here.
Arthur Cassavant?
Here.
John Engel?
Here.
Chris Herring?
Here.
Okay, and Paul Kanag is out tonight, okay? So Commissioners, we've got Burtis, which we'll start with, we'll then move on to uh, fifty-one Main and then seven fifty-one Weed, so item number one, eleven twenty-one and twenty-five Burtis Avenue. You all like to talk about it, or can I entertain a motion? Uh, oh, seedings, that's what I wanted to do. So, uh, Mr. Herring, you are seated for Mr. Ward, okay?
Okay.
And the other thing I want to mention on Burtis is everybody either viewed the tapes or attended all the meetings? Everybody good?
I know, I am not, th- this is art, I have not, I have not viewed all of the tapes, I missed the Monday twenty-fourth, or whatever that date was.
Okay, so Mr. Cass, you are not seated for Burtis. Um, that leaves us with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, just have plenty of people, okay? They entertain a motion, or would you all like to talk about it?
Um, this, Mr. Commissioner, if I might add a few comments about, uh, the application. And, uh, can you hear me clearly?
We can.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, the, um, the application and the design and all of the considerations that have gone into this application as far as urban planning, um, the aesthetics of the project, um, you know, if, if you compare this to the other two, three applications for the, um, low-income housing, um, you know, here is an application or a design that really has not maximized the site in the sense of overburdening the neighbors and the, um, uh, adjacent properties. This is really a balance of something that, um, is, is done very, very well. And, um, I think that we have to understand that, uh, because of the desire or the, um, ability of the designer to, uh, make the financials work is really an example of what the other three, three O Gs, three A Gs should be, you know, looking at. This is really something very, very special. So I think this application needs to be understood at a design level, an urban planning level, and just something that is good for New Canaan. And not to maximize profits and to cram something into a site that is not appropriate. Thank you.
You're welcome. Kent, um, would you, so you're clearly in support of the project, are there any conditions you would suggest? Are you comfortable with the project as presented?
No, I think the, um, developer, the owner, the architects, everybody on that team has done a tremendous job of working with us and that we can trust them, and I don't think that we'll see material changes and things that we've experienced in the past, and I think that, um, you know, I recommend that we approve without conditions.
I have a comment or two, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I think the general tone of the interchange with the applicant has been a very respectful give and take that I think has benefited the, uh, project. You know, originally, there was some idea of some offices, temp offices, I guess, in the street, I don't know what term to use. Uh, the commission expressed some, some hesitancy on that, and there was a change, including an addition of retail, which I think was, might personally believe was very appropriate for the site, given adjacency to downtown. I think very high-quality materials are being used for the site, which, uh, I think is important. It's somewhat different, um, design than some other, um, uh, buildings in the adjacent area, but I, I am okay with that, you know, they, they said the same thing about the Moderns, and we have those, but I think for, for what it is, it's very well done. We have a diversity of housing here, and, uh, I'm, I'm very encouraged by this, and I would echo, um, the comments from, uh, Commissioner Turner to that it doesn't overwhelm the site, it seems to fit in well as far as height and, and, uh, ingress and egress and, uh, doing the best they can with, uh, landscaping and softening edges. I, I was very encouraged by the application, and the result is going to be some very nice houses, including uh, accommodation for people of more modest means, which is in keeping with our plan of conservation development. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Chris. Anybody else?
Um, sure, I'll talk about it. First off, Lynn, I have a question. Do, does everyone on Zoom also have the conditions that you proposed to us? All right, so, um, I will move for approval if we're at that phase, but if not, I mean, what I would like to say is that I think that this is
You're, you're welcome to make a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion for approval, and here are the reasons why. Um, I think that it redevelops an underutilized site to a mixed-use that will both fit in and support the vitality of downtown and the surrounding land uses. Um, echoing Mr. Turner's comments, the project is of moderate density, it's less units than actually could be built on here, and it successfully implements, it's the first project to success- successfully implement our inclusionary zoning regulations. Um, I was, as you guys would know, very warm to see that they utilized our existing zoning regulations, um, and really in a very creative way with that, as opposed to coming in with a special zoning district for this specific project. I also really appreciated the use, um, or the promotion of sustainable features such as gray water harvesting, geothermal heating and cooling, solar power, and I think the project does a great job of creating a pedestrian-oriented environment, um, throughout the site and also, uh, to the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, for those people on Zoom, you know, I, in terms of conditions of approval, I don't have any specifically, but, um, Lynn handed out to us a number of them that I think are still outstanding with the, um, engineering department, and I don't know how we go through that.
It's, it's, do you want me to read them, or like, um?
Yeah.
The staff, staff as a whole has sort of, um, put together a list of, um, as, of what was missing from the, uh, from the project along the way.
What does this have specifically to do with engineering, or?
No, it's, it's the, it's with the special permit, but like, um, so there were some open items that weren't, um, like, there was a need for a revised engineering plan, a logistics plan.
Okay, so Lynn, these are items you would be recommending as the planner as conditions of approval?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Krista, you're making the motion, do you want to go there?
Um, I think everyone should at least hear them, I mean,
Sure.
I have to flip it for the first time.
Yeah, yes, okay, so go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, basically that they would submit a co- uh, construction logistics plan prior to the issuance of a zoning permit or a building permit that they would, um, sorry, that they would submit a, um, final comprehensive set of engineering drawings, um, that shows a stormwater management report and, um, satisfies the comments of the town engineer, that they end up contracting with a refuse refusal, um, refuse removal company, um, and update their refuse management plan that if required, if the building overhangs into the town's right-of-way, that they would, um, and turn into an easement agreement with the town, um, that they're gonna pay any, um, permitting fees owed to the town associated with this approval, um, that they're gonna work to modify the utilities, um, and the impact that that would have to other parcels in the neighborhood, and as much as possible, try and limit it to off-hours. Um, they're gonna, um, use the building materials that they were, that they represented in the public hearing, and any modifications to those they would bring before this commission for administrative approval, that they would have to merge all the parcels as part of this approval, which include, um, lot map T block two thirty-six, lot six forty, map T block two thirty-six, lot six forty-one, map T block two thirty-six, lot six forty-two, map T block two thirty-six, lot six fifty-one. And, um, if they get, um, if, if they purchase it from the town, map T block two thirty-six, lot six fifty-two, which is also known as parcel K. And that they would, um, work to make sure that all the foundations are within the property boundary and that, um, the proximity of townhouse four from the would be, um, is, wouldn't be too close to the curve on Cherry Street as we discussed. There was some more, one second. That they, um, essentially would not commence any work on the site, um, and for, for any footings for foundations or building or structures until they get the, uh, zoning permit or subsequently a building permit. That, um, they would have a loading zone as approved by the, um, Police Commission in September. And, um, they're gonna take all necessary steps to control temporary and permanent storm, stormwater discharges to prevent erosion and sedimentation from the existing site. All the refuse containers will be maintained in accordance with chapter twenty-five of the town code. All site lighting shall be shielded and comply with section six point one-one of the New Canaan zoning regulations. All mechanical equipment, including but not limited to the chillers, um, HVAC and generators will be fully screened from all off-site vantage points. That, um, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or temporary certificate of occup- occupancy, um, the applicant would submit an as-built plan, showing all the completed improvements, submit their drainage, um, certificate to the tra- town engineer, submit a certification from a landscape architect regarding the number, type, and sizes for the plant materials. Um, and ideally, all much plant materials should be native plants. Um, they would submit a landscape maintenance plan, they would install a hidden driveway sign for safety on Cherry Street in a location approved by the Police Commission. They would submit a finalized affordability plan to the satisfaction of the town planner and consistent with local and state regulations. And, uh, I think that might cover all of the, uh, procedural sanitary, they would also submit a sanitary sewer summary report. And I think that covers everything.
Okay, so Commissioner Nielsen, do you want to incorporate all of those conditions into your approval, into your motion for approval?
I am fine with those conditions, I don't have any.
Chairman, I will second the motion.
Okay, seconded. Uh, before we proceed, let the record show, Mr. Radman has arrived and is seated for this application. Okay, further discussion of the motion?
Um, I just wanted to chime in and say, I think it's a fantastic addition to the downtown landscape, good infill. Um, and I like the, the juxtaposition of the townhouses and the more lar- the larger structures, I think it's a similar to the, the positive feedback I've received on the East Avenue, um, development adjacent to the post office, so I think from a, a town perspective, I've heard very good feedback on that development, the forestry development. So, uh, one, one quick clarification on the conditions, the building materials are exactly as represented, I, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we you know, if they, if they change the stone color, you know, one degree, is that substantially similar materials, obviously not changing stone to cement, but is that, is that the way to interpret that, Lynn?
I think unless the commission has any issues and the fact, in the past, it's been any significant changes, so if that's, if a small change color is not significant, then we wouldn't bring it back, but if they were to go from brick to limestone, or limestone to brick, or whatever, that would come back to you guys.
Okay, perfect, that's what I was looking for, thank you. That's all I got. Thank you, John, thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question, in the list of conditions you were reading, you mentioned something about chillers?
Uh, to screen the mechanicals, and then to discuss, uh, screen the mechanicals from all viewpoints?
Right, so what, there were no chillers in the presentation?
Oh, I think.
Because chillers constitute a very different animal than what was in the presentation.
I might have added that.
Okay.
From, um, mechan- I, originally it was mechanicals.
What they represented was that the mechanical compressors for the AC systems were in concealed garages off the porches on the top level. Because we questioned that, there was nothing shown on the roof plan, and they said that they created garages on the side.
Yes, and I think you guys asked about views towards those.
I'm sorry?
I thought you guys asked about views towards.
Yeah, that they be concealed.
Yeah, so that, yeah.
Okay.
We can reword it, it's, yeah.
Yeah, just chillers is a whole different thing, so, want to be clear on what, what they're representing.
Any other?
So you're talking more generically, mechanicals?
Mechanicals to be contained in equipment garages on the top level that will be screened from view.
You good with that, Krista?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, Dan, anything else you got?
Yeah, I had, I had asked to revisit the, um, the idea of the right turn only based on input of the view angle, uh, associated with the parking, and then if one street parking spot was removed on the, uh, I guess that's the east side of that curb cut, whether that would improve the view angle to allow for two-way left and right exit, which it is now, has, was there any response to that?
Want them to submit updated plans?
Yeah, I mean, we'll close the hearing. So they don't have the opportunity to provide.
They would, but they'd have to go to the Police Commission, I believe, for that, since that's on, it's the Police Commission, which is the traffic authority. So do you want to send them as a condition to the Police Commission to review?
Absolutely, like I said during the meeting, I think that, that exit, right turn only, is never gonna be right turn only, right? Human nature is someone that's coming out and has to head over to one oh six or to, you know, Smith Ridge Road, they're gonna make that left turn. Whether there's a sign there or not, or whether you tell them not to do it, so I'd rather we create a safer condition somehow to allow that left turn.
Just make it subject to the Police Commission.
Subject to Police Commission or approval.
Okay, and if that, if the Police Commission, um, approves it but modifies the site plan, do you want them to return to the Commission for your review?
No.
No, you can review that.
Okay.
Krista, you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Alright, okay, anybody else?
I, I would just say generally, um, I think that this is a great step forward, it's echoing some of the other comments, but we've gone into, we've asked about fire safety and they satisfied, we asked about pedestrian safety, they satisfied, we asked about height, fifty, fifty-foot, oh, is this a fifty-foot? No, it's a thirty-six-foot building, it's in keeping with the other buildings, uh, you know, on, on both sides. Is there green space? Yes, there's green space on this application. We asked about the materials, you know, we've run into difficulty before where we didn't ask about this very specific materials, this applicant brought in the materials and made us touch, you know, touch the stone, and, uh, so I think that, you know, what, I, I want it to just be part of the record, that we've asked all the same questions, and to a very, uh, detailed degree, the applicant has answered these questions, and, uh, I, I think though, that, that, uh, you know, the major ask is that they're changing the nature of this block, they're changing it from a retail zone to a housing, a mixed-use zone, and, um, I feel that it is appropriate for that neighborhood, so I think, uh, they'll work through some of these concerns that Dan and the others have mentioned. Um, we can work through questions of, uh, traffic circulation, they've even given us very specific traffic cir- circulation plans um, in, in their most recent application, showing us exactly what the, you know, how cars are gonna back up to get into their parking spaces. Anyway, I, um, I believe that the big ask is that they want a mixed use in what has historically been a retail environment. I, I was the one who said I objected to Zoom rooms. I think the applicant, I mean, you know, they, they said Zoom rooms, and I thought, what the heck is that? And I certainly don't want to create a, a district of Zoom rooms, and the applicant heard that, and they responded, and I thought, think that that was tremendous, so for all future applicants, you know, I think that they should understand that we are, um, not stuck in the nineteen fifties, we do understand that the town has to change, we are adapting downtown to, uh, to, to the twenty-first century, and I think this is a great example of how the applicant worked with the commission to answer all those questions in a very specific way. So I'm gonna vote for your motion and vote for this.
So one thing I just, I, I think it's just interesting to have this conversation while we're discussing this, um, you know, this is the second project that I've seen since I've been on the commission where we use a retail zone to basically build a residential project. Now, of course, there is a small amount of commercial in this project, just like on Houston Lane, there was a small amount of office space, but I just think it's an interesting, I don't know if there's an issue with that or not, but I think it's something the commission should consider, because I'm not sure that's entirely what we intended when we talked about mixed-use in our zoning regulations, it does meet the letter of the regulations, I don't know if it meets the intent. And, and again, maybe that's totally fine, it's just an interesting approach to accomplishing a residential project in a commercial zone, and I just think that we should consider going forward, is that how we want, is that what we want in our downtown, and if so, should we be more explicit about doing that as opposed to making people find a sort of nuanced way to accomplish it?
I, I would note that, uh, it was on Main Street, we had an application for conversion of offices in an upper floor above retail to residential, admittedly some small apartments, but residential. If you go in many urban areas, you have older, less functional offices, particularly in the time of work-from-home, that are looking to find a new life, and, uh, residential has been one of the choices in some cases. Uh, it, it was mentioned, uh, the one on, on Forest and Locust, which is a combination retail and residential, we have Forest, first one, residential and retail, if here residential retail, and the mix is different, but, uh, I think all those sites work well. And, uh, I, I think, um, I don't wanna say urban living, since we're turning in an urban area, we call it downtown living, uh, is something many people like, it seems to fit in with the aesthetics of the town, and, uh, I, I'm not, not against it, and when we deal with our plan of conservation and development, which is coming up soon, it would probably best be handled in that form, in my view.
To your point, you've been, this commission, before I got on it, has been defending the retail zone, um, strictly. I mean, you guys agonized over the addition of services, you know, in the retail sector, and how much service was too much service, so, uh, any place we were going to replace retail with services, I think, you know, has been a real problem for this commission. But in this case, we haven't actually had any retail to replace, we had a lot of, you know, uh, empty space, and, um, I think one of the, uh, things that you could say, uh, for this applicant is he put all the parking underground, and I think that's an ex- that, that was an important aspect of the application. Um, uh, so in this case, while we, uh, we didn't grow the retail sector, we also didn't lose any of our existing retail, and so I think it's consistent with your other rulings and decisions.
I would agree with Commissioner Engel, especially on the, uh, parking, we don't have massive grade parking right up cheek by jaw with other things, it's, it's sized nicely, it's, it's, it's hidden well, the flow seems good, I think that's a very positive aspects of, of this, uh, of this development, I'm encouraged by it.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I, I think from a a zoning perspective, and, you know, you can only plan the downtown so much, you have to leave room open for creativity. And I think that's what we have here, is creativity. Um, I also think that in terms of retail supply, I, you know, I think retail's clearly been challenged, as we all know, I think the good news is that seems to be evening out, at least nationally, you know, in terms of loss of share to online, so to speak. That said, yeah, I think it's important, we've done studies in the past, and we have multiple areas of town which still can be redeveloped, where we can get additional supply of retail, whether it's retail slash services, so it's not as if we are sucking anything out of, you know, the town and from a provision perspective. You know, I'll, I'll just quickly second the fact that it's great to see usage of our affordable housing regulations, this is, you know, we, we we're making the trade of affordable for density, this is the right way to go about it. Um, and it's just a great to see a project where, look, developers are out there to make money, but they've taken pride in their project. Um, as all of you have said, they've decided to work with the commission as opposed to being opposed to the commission, and then I think it's gonna be a wonderful project. Okay, I'm calling the question, John Goodwin, I vote yes, Kent Turner?
Yes.
Uh, Dan Radman?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Claire Tascornia?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant? Oh, no, sorry, Arthur Cassavant is not seated, uh, John Engel?
Yes.
Uh, Chris Herring?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, let's move, uh, you're welcome, let's move on to fifty-one, uh, Main Street, um, let's talk about seedings. Um, has everybody attending the meeting tonight, um, either attended all meetings or have viewed the tapes? Everybody good? Everybody good on Zoom?
Yes.
Um, John, I missed one, so I should not be seated for this one.
Okay, Mr. Herring, you are not seated, okay, everybody else attending tonight is seated. So what I'd like to do with fifty-one Main is, um, sort of along the wa- lines of what we did with seven fifty-one Weed a few weeks ago, is the objective here is to get a sense of the commission, is how do you feel um, about approval or denial of the project, and then based upon how we come out, then let's have a discussion about reasons for approval or denial, so anybody feel free to, if in chat.
A number of issues with this, um, let me start with the most important one, that really is, I think, important to many people in town, uh, at least from comments we've had for this commission, and this is the historic district. It is this building, uh, the wooden Red Cross Building, I'll call it, since I think that's what most everyone refers to it as, fifty-one Main, is, uh, run a hundred years old, it's one of twenty-five contributing properties to a small historic district that I think is pretty dear to the heart of, of New Canaan, and sits at the heart of town, right across from, um, traditional town green, used to be a bearing ground, um, war memorial to fallen heroes, uh, near several historic churches, it's a very important site, in my view. Um, the, uh, preservation expert we had speaking to us, I, I thought was very persuasive in outlining some of the effects of this, uh, of this proposed development. By the quote right, it's quote destroying the historical integrity of the historic district as planned, which would mean moving the building forward. So it really, in my view, cannibalizes the front lawn, if you look at the other buildings in the area, there tends to be a front area, the buildings are set back, so you have a green area by sidewalks, and also there's a transformer that gets stuck right in front, which apparently is needed, given the electrical needs as proposed. Sort of covered up by foliage and not particularly well. Also, there's a gap right by the new building that's proposed to be put in. And, uh, there was a comment that the, means the building essentially becomes ineligible for certain historic district, um, designations. You know, we don't have that many, we only have two dozen buildings in the historic district, and essentially we lose one significantly, just of that one, but i- i- it affects the entire envelope of the district, was the vibe I got from, uh, from the outside expert, as well as from other speakers, and then I find distressing, and a significant loss of, of value and damage to, uh, cultural heritage of our town, and, um, that concerns me, so that's my initial comment, I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chris, anybody else?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think that that's the heart of the issue here, and as I understand it from town council, our task is to weigh the value of affordable housing against other public goods, public safety issues, um, and public health needs, and in this case, it really comes down to weighing the benefit of six affordable housing units against potentially the destruction of our only historic districts, and that might be a pretty blunt way of putting it, but once you put it that way, it kind of doesn't, there's no way to even that out, I mean, if there's seven thousand five hundred and fifty-one housing units in New Canaan, and twenty-five of them are in this historic district, that means there's seven thousand five hundred and twenty-five other places, you could put six affordable units.
Right.
Um, and so I think, you know, there are a lot of other places for affordable housing. there are a lot of other places for affordable housing and there's only one, and there's only probably ever going to be one historic district in New Canaan. So, once it's destroyed, it's gone. Um, and I think there's opportunities elsewhere. So that's, to me, that's the gist of the problem. I think there are some other problems with this application that we heard from the professionals in terms of fire safety and things like that, but that's really the heart of what we're dealing with, in my opinion.
Uh, to expand that, Commissioner Nielsen, it's not just the loss of this building, but it's sort of the nose under the camel's nose under the tent. You know, one, one building is its historical integrity is damaged and so, well, so what if the next one, as we already, already, you're pulling on that loose, loose thread? And, and so I think it's important for the commission to think about whether it's uh, the right decision to draw a very firm line in defense of our historic district and the various components of that district with this being an important one. Which has, as we've heard from various architects, has some very uncommon aspects as far as fenestration and so on, that would be, that will be lost. I would concur also with Commissioner Nielsen that there are other issues, there's traffic, it's right by you. We've all been at that intersection, that's a tricky intersection, even on a good day. And uh, I, I can't see how this improves it at all as far as traffic safety, and I'm meaning life and limb here, not just a couple fender benders. Fire marshal had some comments that were not were, were very concerning to me. Uh, so I think there are a number of issues, but the, the overwhelming issue to me is still the historic district integrity in our defense of it.
Well, and I'll just add from what I said and, and what you're saying, Mr. Chris, I don't think that there is an inherent conflict between having multifamily and a historic district. I think, I mean, there already are multifamily buildings in the historic district, Church Walk next door being one example. And I think there's um, some around the corner on Main Street that back up to the um, towns parking lots here. So I mean, it can be done. And actually, I was on a call today um, through Desegregate Connecticut and I don't know, Preservation Connecticut, where they were talking about affordable housing and historic preservation and how there isn't an inherent conflict. And, and I agree with that, I think you can have multifamily and I think you can have affordable housing. I think in order to make it successful, you would have to preserve and adaptively reuse the historic structure. And not dwarf it with an enormous building behind it and not, as Mr. Chris would say, cannibalize the front yard. And that's not what's being done here. But I just, I think we should be clear that this isn't a hit against multifamily or a hit against affordable housing. It's literally this project as proposed um, in this location.
There's not just house, single family housing and multifamily, but there's also, there's an office at the corner at Heritage Hill. There's a law office. I think it's unobtrusive from an historical perspective. They seem to take very good care of the building. And, and so you can, you can keep the, the building and reuse the, rejig the inside and reuse it uh, for other purposes. It's, uh, I have no issue with that. And we've had that in many buildings. There's a building nearby that's not in the historic district, but it's the one um, on Park by Seminary. It's that white building, it's right across from the uh, Christian Science Church. And it was before this commission. And it had been, I think, a tavern and a school and a few other things in its, in its two-hundred-year life. And uh, you know, there was an interest in uh, putting some offices in it, in the, in the lower level, if memory serves, which we approved. But again, you know, it's, it's maintaining in a very important building, I, I think, in a very important corner. And I think we did a good job for that and made the building useful for new types of uh, uh, activities in a, in a sympathetic way. So I think this can be done, we just need some creativity.
Okay.
I would, I would echo all of those comments um, and just add that, you know, we as a commission have gone a long way, both with the P O C D and also zoning zoning allowances and zoning regulations concerning the mid-century monitors in town to help preserve those because we do understand that they are a, a valuable and dwindling asset and represent, you know, are a, a really unique character and fabric to this town, as does this historic district. And we're not going to gain it back, right? So the twenty-five houses that are here, we need to maintain them. We made the mistake on the nineteen thirteen library, let's not make the mistake here. My opinion. Sorry, had to throw that in.
I know you did.
I also note on the, on the front yard, I think it was the um, uh, our preservation consultant who mentioned the importance of green spaces in front of the buildings and so forth, and he lamented the loss of that space. And, and so we have uh, an expert in historic preservation echoing this issue, which certainly gives me and, gives me encouragement.
Yeah, I think that was a very important point. And as Commissioner Turner pointed out, it turned into a depot, I think was the term he used. That front yard, just paving it over is just one more insult to the historic district.
It's, it's, you have this small part of grass. You have a, a metal box stuck in the middle of that small spot of grass. And then you have this turning radius, haha, which I don't believe to be turning, it's going to turn to parking. So you have a, a greens, a large green space that shrinks, shrinks, shrinks. And it's not just disappeared with a, with a, a nicer old building, but it disappears with slab asphalt. It's, it's, it's harsh.
Well, and it changes on the overall streetscape of the historic district, that fifty-foot setback throughout the historic district is part of the integrity of it. And when you start messing with that, um, you're messing with the integrity.
I'll vote against this for what amounts to the moving of the building, which has to do with the front setback, which has to do with the, with the, the, the changing of the. And, and basically it comes down to, I, I do believe that we have to weigh affordable housing with the respect of our um, historic district. The moving of the building uh, damages the historic district. And the benefit of adding w- less than one one-thousandth of the, of, of, of the housing in New Canaan, making less than one one-thousandth of the housing affordable is not enough of a benefit to damage our historic district.
I would also note the historic district, the, it's not just the house itself, but it's the plot on which the house sits, is the historic district. And the reason it's being moved forward is that a very large building, very close to adjoining properties uh, is intended to be built. And so you know, not just have the uh, issues to the historic building and the um, lawn in front of the historic building, which is part of the historic district, but a very big building looming over our historic district. So it's not just affecting this particular building, the, the old Red Cross building, but neighboring buildings too. And so really, no matter where you're going to be standing in this historic district, you not only see the little red cross building shoved up into the street or near the street, but you have this big building looming, looming over it, which seems um, inconsistent with an historic district. And that hasn't been mentioned yet, but I think this is a big building. And look at some of the pictures uh, were, were a little scary to me on, on, just to uh, think about what this will do to the entire view shed of the historic district, which is one of the things an historic district is. It's where there's this one, Historic Deerfield, other places, you know, there, you, you want the adjacencies or everything in it to have a certain consistency with the historic district. And this seems to be at odds with that. And I think it, that type of size building, height, uh, closeness to adjacent, uh, to closeness to the property lines provides damage to the view shed, which is an integral part of the historic district.
I think it's important to note also, and it hasn't been said tonight, so I'll mention it. Like to hear what you think, but in this application, the parking is surface and it's covered by a wall. And it's not underground. And I think that's an important difference between this site and some of the other three-acre sites uh, and larger sites. This is a small enough site that I presume that the applicant didn't make underground parking because wouldn't get enough of it and would be of s- significant expense. So what we've done is we've added at least twenty or thirty units of surface parking under the building, which we, 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 back in the eighties, decided we didn't want to build buildings on stilts anymore. And we passed a series of regulations against building, buildings on stilts and parking, all the parking underneath just to save money. So what we have here is a very tiny lot with surface parking with it, with the building above the parking. And that's just not a direction that we decided we wanted to go back in the eighties and have been trying very hard. Some of these applicants, like Burtus Avenue, have undertaken great expense when they're in the tight area of the downtown to put that parking underground. I think this is going to be important for us to signal to future applicants that it's not good enough to stick all your parking on the surface and build your buildings on stilts uh, above the, of the, above the cars.
Well, Mr. uh, uh, Engel, I have to correct you a bit, it's not the cars under the building, they're only partly under the building, partly cars stick out from under the building because there's not enough room on the site, so.
They're still on the surface.
Even more egregious view shed potential damage to the site as opposed to hidden parking. Remember the pictures. Anybody else?
I was just, I, I think it's also worth mentioning and which creates the, in my opinion, a uh, significant safety problem and traffic flow problem is just the design of a uh, a curb cut and egress, ingress and egress out of this site into a traffic light condition, an unorthodox five-directional traffic light condition that the applicant is not looking to modify in any way. So then you have cars entering is one thing, exiting out into an intersection where they can't see the uh, lights for the oncoming traffic and know which way to turn and not be hit, I think is just plain dumb. And the manner in which the design has been put forth with that little turnaround area in the front, we all brought this up during the application. Just think about the congestion, right? A delivery truck comes in to deliver Amazon, someone's parked in that front parking spot, that truck can't turn around because of the design of the site. They have to back out into an intersection that doesn't have a light for them into oncoming traffic. It's just, it's a disaster waiting to happen. No matter what the hired consultant for the applicant says, I don't, I just don't see how that is a safe intersection at all.
Oh, it's my sense of the hired consultant, a lot of his uh, testimony was, I'll leave it up to DOT.
Right, without consulting with DOT, D O T
Right.
to get a definitive answer.
Right. And then also just adding to that and specifically referencing our traffic engineers input, including the sightlines as well as the circulation into the.
I'll concur, Mr. Chairman, I think it was on, at uh, eight fifty, I put the timestamp on my notes. Um, our traffic expert worried about sightlines, uh, cannot see any stoplights, need a signal. It egress, no red on red, various other comments, uh, he seemed quite worried, frankly, and I, I share his concern.
Yep.
Yeah, and one of the, I mean, we're, so, you know, one can say, well, you can condition these things. And, and one of my concerns about conditioning these things is I just don't have any comfort that the conditions will be met to the quality of standards that we would expect. And, and that's, you know, a challenge in trying to think about, okay, well, do we condition this application and?
I, I don't, Mr. Chairman, I don't think how, I, I can understand maybe how some things can be conditioned, but the, the effects of moving the, this historic building forward using up or utilizing a significant amount of the lawn setback to do so, having to put a transformer in the front and having an extremely large building now looming over our historic district, I'm not sure how you can condition out of that. Frankly, I don't think there is a way out. If there is, please, someone tell me, because I don't know what it is. I just can't see a way to square that circle.
Yep, uh, this is Commissioner Cassavant. I, I, I'd like to agree with all of the commentary, but I also would like to raise what I consider to be a critical obligation of our committee, which is to ensure public safety. I think that the potential for damage in that intersection, particularly so close to our critical fire station alone, creates traffic damage, which would, it makes it incumbent upon us to use our authority to recognize the health and safety issues, regardless of how you might feel about the historic district. I also think the density of the building, the fire safety building issues that were raised and debated by the experts are important. But I think that the traffic matter alone, even without respect to the issue of water, the significant amount of impermeable surface and other matters makes this a, an application that is unacceptable for safety of the town.
By the way, it, it is, Lynn, is Attorney Gelderman on the Zoom?
Um, I believe she is, actually.
I am, I'm here.
Great, okay, I just wanted to make sure you're out there, Pete.
Yep, thanks.
Okay. Okay, anybody else?
I think it's, I think it's worth noting that the, this area uh, is not just lately of interest to the town. The town wrestled with this decades ago when the Vine Cottage, you know, was uh, going to potentially change, be sold and changed. And the town stepped up and said, this is an important intersection. It's not just aesthetic, this is an important place. And um, and so this is not, I think it's important that we communicate to whoever's gonna, you know, hear this on appeal, you know, in the future, may not be uh, from around here, that this town has taken a great interest in this site, bought at great expense the adjacent building in order to preserve these sightlines, this pedestrian safety, this vehicular safety, this use, all of this. And so for the applicant to come and say that the town uh, has no interest in this property would be disingenuous. The town has always been interested in this, the entrance to New Canaan.
Yeah, I was, that's a good, great point. And David Scott Parker, the historic preservation um, expert that we had speak, you know, talked about this as being the bucolic entrance to the Churchill Historic District. And so I think, you know, not only is it a contributing property and that's important, but it's like the entrance. It's, you know, what you see when you enter the town in terms of the historic district. So I think that it's very important how we frame that.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Yes, it's
Turner.
Kent Turner, Commissioner Turner. Um, I do have a few comments. You know, we have to really kind of look back at our um, New Canaan Village Design Guidelines. You know, they're married with this historical district. You can't separate these two bodies of knowledge and understanding. And if we, you know, just simply look at the table of contents for the uh, Village District Guidelines, where we have issues. I mean, number one, architectural character. Um, I don't think I need to even suggest that this project is within any kind of conformance of architectural character. The next one is the height, bulk and scale compatibility. It doesn't even begin to conform to any of the historical buildings in that area. Site planning for a historic environment. We, we see that the applicant has maximized the site, has no concern mind of, of site planning to create an environment that is historic. The elements of design, facade articulation, architectural concept and consistency. Uh, this building is so foreign for that location and the adjacent buildings, it just makes no sense whatsoever. Height, bulk and scale. Again, I don't need to highlight that this building is so out of scale, out of character for this area. General landscaping principles. Um, we have a little tiny three or four foot berm or, I, excuse me, a barrier between the property line and what we're, they're proposing for landscaping. What, what can you grow in that? Make any sense? It, uh, the existing trees, the boppers, the raining, it, it's just, it, it, it doesn't conform. I'll just, I'll just finish by saying that we have to start understanding that we've developed some very significant planning documents. The downtown village design guidelines are significant. And I suggest that this project doesn't meet that in any sense, nor does it meet any historical district that we have. Thank you. Thank you.
Sure with Commissioner Turner on the um. Green space, the green space seems to be something that's not really integral to the plan, but sort of leftover spots that um. Couldn't be built on, so they have grass on it. Um, I I would see this movement of the historic building as well as the intended construction of a very large modern building is really is. It'd be a blemish on the face of an old and dear friend. And I think that's what we think our historic district is, and I think we'd be very sad if that were to happen.
Anybody else?
Uh, the the one thing I'll note um is that the separation of the two buildings really accomplished. Nothing in terms of addressing the historical importance. Of the front building and actually created as our um fire safety. Expert pointed out, actually, experts, I think they both discussed this, created additional problems both in the. The area between the separated buildings as well as pushing the new building back into the setbacks against. Towards the back, which created additional issues for effective usage of fire equipment. Um, yes, sir, so, okay. Anybody else? Attorney Gelderman, uh Planner Avney, um, is that sufficient for you to uh work on a um? Draft of uh denial?
I I think that's a start for, to to give us a start.
Okay.
That's.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I I agree with Lynn, we can, we can um put together a uh. Uh certainly an initial draft of a resolution based on that information.
Okay. Thank you, Pete.
Lynn, would you like us to send you written comments as we did for seven fifty one weed? Would that be helpful?
That would be helpful if anyone has specific comments or remembers specific in the record where someone referenced. What their point was, that would be helpful.
Okay, great. Okay, let's move on to seven fifty one weed, so commissioners that are here. You have a draft um from Planner Avney and Attorney Gelderman. Of uh. Motion for denial, um commissioners who are on Zoom, you should have it in your email box, it went out. Um, probably about forty five minutes ago. Um. So in an ideal world. Um, and what I thought we could do is we can walk through this in an ideal world. Um, we would give sufficient feedback to Pete and Lynn. Then have potentially a draft ready for our review on Tuesday, this may or may not happen. Um, our date for a decision is December one, right Lynn? Lynn, December one is our, our.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we could always do a special meeting after the Tuesday meeting, um but so the objective for tonight. Is to give feedback to them, you know, and the key questions are. Um, are these addressing um your points for denial? Um, is there anything different? Is there anything that should be changed? Okay. Um.
Maybe the seating.
Pardon me, oh seating, yeah, thank you. Let me find my list here. So the seedings for seven fifty one weed are myself, John Goodwin, um Kent Turner. Um, Dan Radman, John Cris, Krista Nielsen. Arthur Cassavant, John Engel and Chris Herring, so everybody verifies that you have viewed all meetings. And or the tapes, right?
Mm hmm, yes.
Right, okay, thanks. Okay, so looking at the document, um. Maybe I'll try to read, walk us through general findings, applicant W Partners LLC Development Plan applicant seven fifty one weed as a. As owner, seek approval for general statute section eight thirty G set aside development of hundred and two dwelling units, that's what they're looking for. Development site is, we need to put in the the acres, corner parcel located the intersection of Wheaton Elm, the parcels improve the single family dwelling built nineteen twenty eight. But this is pretty straightforward factual. Number three, pretty straightforward factual proposed development consists of one five story multifamily building onsite parking will consist of outside surface parking containing spaces. Need to be put in open air covered act rate consisting of numbers faces. Item number four, again, just describing what the project is, the above ground covered parking contains square footage needs to be put in first floor, second floor, third floor. Fourth floor. Item number five, the height from the building to the peak of the building, that needs to be filled in. Uh, item number six development is located the building location northeast corner of Wheaton Elm. Item number seven, subject properties located one acre, single family zoning district maximum building coverage is, we'll put that in, the proposed development is. Building coverage of that will be put in. Item number eight applicant proposed to extend municipal sewer from an existing manhole to a new manhole to provide sewage disposal. W B C A denied the applicant's request to extend the sewer because according to the applicant, the site already has access to the municipal sewer through private easement. Submitted application includes a traffic report, storm order management, engineered site plans, landscape, architectural lighting plan, affordability plan. Item number ten, the affordable affordability plan submitted by the applicant describes rental amounts and they appear to be consistent. With eight thirty G requirements. Item number eleven, the applicant has taken a position consistent with eight thirty G that all local zoning regulations are not applicable. And thus proposed plans do not comply with any elements permitted developments within the one acre zone. Item twelve, the project is converted in affordable housing set aside development, which means it is development where now less than thirty percent of the dwelling units will be conveyed by deed. Containing covenants restrictions which shall require that for at least forty years after the initial occupation, the development such dwelling units will be sold or rented at or below prices. Which are thirty percent or less of their annual income, where such income is less than or equal to eighty percent of the state or area median income. They then give the figures for that. Um, then point out going to the top of page three. Um, basic facts, there are thirty percent affordable units, at least fifteen percent of the dwelling unit should be sold or rented to families. Uh remainder of the affordable dwelling unit shall be sold or rented families whose income is less than eighty percent of the state median income. Item number thirteen, evaluating the present application, the commission is first required to identify sub. Substantial public interest in health, safety and other matters, commission must then determine the protection of such public interest clearly outweighs need for affordable housing. Item number fourteen, the need protects substantial public interest weight against the need to provide affordable housing is a balancing test, several factors must be considered. New Canaan has adopted numerous regulations designed to encourage development, affordable housing, and those regulations have resulted as per applicant's own submission in the construction. Construction of new affordable housing units at an average percent growth per year since two thousand one of two point eight eight percent. Additionally, applicants attorney advised the commission that it was necessary to determine the need for affordable housing or regional rather than rather. On a regional rather than, should say, municipal basis. Both Stanford and Norwalk contain affordable housing units in excess of ten percent of total housing units, finally according to affordable housing need in the Canaan surrounding towns. Affordable housing need for Fairfield County is quite low, and if the ten percent exemption applied to counties instead of municipalities Fairfield County would. Almost securing an exemption, the Partnership for Strong Communities twenty twenty housing data profiles Fairfield County indicate that nine point six percent of the regions affordable. Of the regions' housing is affordable. Um, so mainly up upfront facts, um any issues, input?
In no particular order.
Uh, sure.
All right, so I I I um, I think it would. Came up with a bunch of things and I and I didn't see them obviously here in the list of of uh. It's organized as identified substantial public interest and there are four. But I found them once I read more carefully. So the first one I was thinking about was uh the sewer, we had a great deal of conversation about the sewer, how much could the sewer handle? And then I I talked and then I thought about the wetlands and pervious surface, I found mention. Of the wetlands and protection of the wetlands and uh in the stormwater runoff, but. My first point is, I think we should break out and have separate paragraphs on our. Discussion of the sewer, we spent a great deal of time talking about whether it should be. Uh tied into on Elm Street, why or why not? Should it be on Kimberly Place, why or why not? Could we handle it? You know, peak load and all that, so I missed the sewer conversation in the document. The second was the wetlands, I know that the um Owen Oak. Is it, no, Garrish, Garrish, people who live on the Elbow and Garrish, you know, have uh wetlands. And were very protective of those wetlands and some of those applicants came and said, you know, we we we, our wetlands go right up. Adjacent to this property and um it's uh hard to imagine that this. Um, completely paved over and overbuilt property just. Above us on the hill is gonna have no impact on our welllands, so I think wetlands should be called out as a separate paragraph as well. I kept, then I I saw pedestrian safety, I'd like to see us talk about vehicular safety. Specifically, and I have four points to make here. Uh sightlines, um I I I travel through that intersection uh at probably four times a day. And it was only through these hearings and through the testimony of the experts. Uh that I uh it it caused me to pay attention to the fact that there is a big hump. If you will, on Elm Street, and I never realized that before, that I'm flying down uh Elm Street. Moving south on Elm Street and I really can't see that intersection over the hump until I'm upon it. Uh, and so you get, I don't know if you realize that, but when you're in front of um. What's her name, Irene's house, is just about the first time that you can see into that intersection and. Begin to evaluate whether, you know, oh, there's there's a person in it, there's people coming out, there's, you know, they're wondering, they're stopped. Because a pedestrian is crossing the street, so I I I thought sightlines, the discussion of sightlines coming up and down Elm was important. Sightlines uh yesterday uh was struck coming up Elm Street into that intersection. I could, I could not see at all because it was sunset, and when the sun sets over those houses. Your sightlines are further obscured and you can't see into that intersection because the sun comes right over that house in the intersection.
John, let me, let me jump in real quick um to help Lynn and Pete. Also, when you can refer to expert input that's in the record as to these various.
I'll go back.
Yeah.
And find it, but um so we'll go find that the the sightlines, we'll we'll talk about uh the sunset. The neighbors talked about the wetlands uh stacking, I know we had a great uh conversation on the record over. Uh how many cars would be stacked on that intersection, I can tell you tonight on my way home, I was the fifth, I was. I was five cars deep into that intersection and I was almost at the place where the current driveway is now. So I know that that's a typical day that uh in my suburban. And I don't know what kind of cars they were talking about where you could stack nine comfortably, because I was the fifth and my suburban was just about at that driveway. Um, and a lot of people drive Suburbans in this town, anyway, I felt like um. It it's not hard to imagine that the cars will block the driveway and impede the flow of traffic. Off of the site and attempting to make a left turn, so as we discussed with the previous application. Uh to merely say, well, we'll leave it to D O T to figure out, was not sufficient in my mind to talk about the uh vehicular safety. Making a left turn, sunset stacking, okay. And then on the site, the turning radius of vehicles, we talked a great deal about fire, and I guess it's in the fire safety paragraph, but we talked about. Um, the, the, the number of vehicles. And those vehicles trying to exit the site when emergency vehicles are trying to enter the site. And the emergency vehicles are really relying on all of the available. Um roadway on the site. And um I do not think, and it was the expert testimony, that will, an extra egress onto. The very fast. Reed Street would not be sufficient to mitigate the the vehicular safety issue onsite. Um, I was concerned with the the design of the building in a C. Which caused a great deal of the congestion to be on the interior of this. So rather than a a building which would be an ordinary rectangle, this requires the fire safety paragraph, the fire vehicles and a lot of the safety vehicles. To basically enter into the interior of the C shaped design, a lot of the pedestrian. Um, uh, safety, vehicle safety, a lot going on in that very congested interior of the sea. Um, snow management, I don't, didn't see anything about the snow management, garbage management on this uh draft and. Uh, once again, surface parking, um basically we're covering every inch of this. Um, and so we didn't really talk about them, the amount of parking, the fact that it's surface parking, which was um. Which is uh uh. Uh, hidden, I guess, if you will, behind a berm. Um, but nevertheless, it is surface parking causing this to be a building built up again on stilts, which is in violation of. You know, the uh our design principles and everything we've been doing for the last forty years. So I'd like to see that in there as well, if we could. How's that Lynn? Get get you some references?
Yes, that would be very helpful.
Uh, this is Commissioner Chris, I submitted a couple of comments to the uh. Planner's office, I think she has those. And uh a number of the points are in here, I also cited um oral and written testimony. Uh, I I think on the traffic, other, the stormwater management, haven't. Been able to read the entire document just submitted very, very quickly, but um. It's not just stormwater, and I I would split stormwater management effects into two areas, one is water that causes damage to property. Uh can cause um he uh damage to sewers, damage to roads, damage to adjacent property because of. Stormwater flooding, the second is the icing issue, which was also discussed uh in oral testimony with our experts and before the commission. That brings up a a life and limb issue as opposed to an expensive annoyance issue. Because we have not only potential for flooding as described to this commission on Weed Street, which is a very busy street where people speed. Uh, but also an important corner, which some people take a little too quickly, I will say, and um. Maybe have to take sharp turns because many of the people who are exiting. Uh, uh, who are heading uh west on Elm and come to that stop sign will go. Through the stop sign up really to the edge of the intersection or into the intersections, they can see what's going on. And then you have to make an even sharper turn into Elm Street. And so sharper turns are trickier to execute and with icing could be a real problem, also Elm is on a hill. And that creates additional icing hazards, I mean, the commentary I had on this. Um. Or is it, is it Mr. Trinkus? Um, about compact soils, where's that? I am, it was on um oral common string on the twenty seventh September. Uh, I discussed the issue of risk of ice and he said, quote, water on roads in the winter is a recipe for black ice. He also noticed the runoff would be concentrated in defined spot, that was in quotes, and uh and it will, quote, increase potential problem. Um, uh, also learning the wetlands, uh, he, uh, I note that there was a Mr. Kelly who was a neighbor. On the other side of Weed Street who has wetlands on his property and that should be noted too, not just the wetlands that Commissioner. Uh Engel referenced, but this icing issue I think is a separate one. Because particularly with dealing with eight thirty G issues of of acute public safety tend to be a focus and. Uh icing, uh potential skidding, someone doing a three sixty in a car and killing pedestrians. Because there are sidewalks there is is something of concern to me and I think should be highlighted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is, is there room in this um to talk about the the neighborhood or is that sort of out of bounds? I'd like to point out that the Stanley Resort property.
Well, let's ask, um, let's ask Attorney Gelderman, what do you think?
Uh, well, to the extent the. Concern about the neighborhood has an impact on public health, safety, then it's appropriate. Um, if it's, if it's a character question, it's, it's really not. Neighborhood character uh is really not an appropriate. Concern or consideration, but if there's a health or. But if there's a health or safety correlation between this project and the neighborhood, then, then it is appropriate.
I just wanted to point out, okay, I'll, I'll stay away from character observations and point out that this property of three and a half acres is not like the Park Street property of three and a half acres, is not like the four acres, the Stanley Resort property or the Weed Street subdivision, eight acres, which, which we subdivided into three lots. This property, you know, is, is not like the, so the Park Street property, we allowed 100 units. And I want, and I want to make sure that whoever's reviewing this on appeal doesn't say, well, this is a, a three and a half, this is a property like that property. They're both three and a half acres and they're both close to a train station. That property is surrounded on all sides by multi unit housing. This property does not have multi-use unit housing on any of its sides or across any of its streets. So this is a very different neighborhood with very different traffic patterns. The Park Street application that we heard and approved was in a neighborhood with traffic lights. This is not a neighborhood with traffic lights. This is a neighborhood that actually has a green link installed in the last couple of years to encourage pedestrians to ta- travel along the sidewalks we just installed to the green link we just installed through our nature center to take a three and a half mile walk through nature. That's this neighborhood as opposed to the Park Street neighborhood that has the view on it. This is not the same neighborhood as the Burdist Street application that we just approved in twenty four, six, twenty-four units? Twenty-four units. While a, a, again, a neighborhood of high density with traffic lights, adequate traffic management, adequate sidewalks. So I, I just want to make sure that when this gets reviewed by people not familiar with this neighborhood, that this neighborhood is not like those other neighborhoods, which the application, which, which applications have been approved.
So in a way, what you're saying is there, there is a, I mean, we're, we're talking about risk to safety of the project itself. But there's also a risk to safety of the surrounding neighborhood.
I mean, I could keep going and talk specifically about the kinds of development. You know, the resort property is four acres, two, two doors down from this, from this. We approved a four, a, a four house subdivision on a four acre property. And, and a few houses down from that, three houses on an eight acre subdivision that had, had wetlands on it. So I, I, I just think that, you know, we're, we're willing to look at subdivisions in this neighborhood, but just not of this density. For safety reasons.
Kind of adding on that, as we went through, and I'm literally reading this as we talk about it now. But as we went through those first 14 findings, one of the thoughts I had is should there be some sort of comparison chart of what the one acre zone allows versus what this project is proposing? And obviously this project's not proposing to be in the one acre zone, but it is going to be surrounded by the one acre zone. And I think that contrast, that vast contrast in terms of coverage and height and landscaping and all of those things should be highlighted somewhere. And I would like to see it highlighted at least in this document so that, you know, whoever reviews it next understands that, you know, this project is really out of conformance with everything else that's going on around it. And like you're saying, it's not in the multifamily or apartment zone. It's not in the retail zone. It's in a single family residential zone, which looks, will look.
And I'd stress that it's not about character. And, and let me give you an example. Every month we hear applications in the one acre zone, two acre zone. And, and every application, we talk about vegetation. Thank you, John Chris, and screening and plants. And this, and the, and this application has none of those. And why do we do that? Why do we talk about plants and screening and all that? Because we don't have adequate infrastructure in the one acre zone, two acre, eight acre zone for our water management and, and, and a lot of the things that we require. We need more plants to absorb the water in the one acre zone than we do in town where we have plenty of stormwater and drains and infrastructure to, to handle it. We don't have the infrastructure in this neighborhood.
Yeah, I would have sympathy with the comments of my fellow commissioners, but eight thirty G is a bit of a get on jail free card. And so I wonder how much legal traction such comments, valid though I believe them to be, are going to generate. We have to think about the forum in which any rejection would be adjudicated and to speak to the rules for that forum. And so my own view is that issues of health, safety, you know, damage to central town assets such as a town green, which we had, and we've spoken of before, I, I think will generate probably more traction in, in this forum, given the kind of hand that gets dealt through eight thirty G. So that, that's my thought. When I, when I look through this document, I, I agree with many of the points. I would like to see more detail and citation of quotations or lifting of direct statements in written form that our experts have provided. So for, as an example, it's on page four, the second paragraph starts with the word specifically. Town is six personnel on duty. That was a statement from our fire chief. It should state, the fire chief has stated so and so, and mentioned the fire chief has significant experience, not only in urban suburban areas, different types of buildings. He understands our town well, these sorts of things I think would support him, his expertness as an example. The second paragraph after that, in addition, existing road access did not comply with fire code requirements for aerial apparatus. Again, details on exactly what that means. I see this more as a topic sentence, which is begging the question of, okay, please tell me more. So these are some, I'll leave it at that for the moment. But I think this commentary would be, would be useful. So it's citing chapter and verse would be necessary to give it a little more oomph.
This is Commissioner Cassavan. I echo Mr. Chris's commentary and I would suggest, and this is quite similar to what I just said about fifty-one. The reason for denial of this application is that in aggregate, the proposed building poses risks to the community because of traffic, overuse of public facilities, inadequate fire protection, and the risk to pedestrians along the street. I recognize that the design requests that have been made or the design changes that have been proposed by the developer have attempted to accommodate some of those concerns. But on balance, I do not believe they address the public safety, health and wellbeing of the community requirements, which our commission is specifically encouraged to consider in an application.
Question for Attorney Gelderman to help us as we think through this and craft it. Pete, to what extent in this do we need to get into specific detail? You know, so and so said this, so and so said that versus identifying, you know, the key issues upon which we're doing the denial. There's a little bit of a difference there. I think that would help us as we work through this.
Yeah, John, there is a little bit of a difference because assuming there's an appeal. And by the way, this exercise only has meaning if there's an appeal. But the appeal will be able to, we write briefs and the briefs will be able to go into the record and find specific citations and quotations and references to items in the record that support the commission's decision. So the important, the, the key to the resolution in my mind is to, is to cite what the important public interests are to, to indicate how, you know, what the effect of those, what the effect of the project is on those interests to determine whether they outweigh the need for affordable housing. And, and is there any way that we can do anything to, to fix that? So the resolution doesn't have to be in as much detail as, as as the brief will be, because the brief will be up to 35 pages long and will contain references. And the record is part of what the court will consider. The record includes the transcript of all of the hearings. And by the way, this deliberation, so so the, the court will be able to, and will be able to guide the court and direct the court to items in the record that support the reasons for the commission's denial of the application. So it's, well, I understand exactly what everybody is saying. And it's great to be as thorough as possible. What, we will have an opportunity to, to be more detailed down the road when we're, when we're writing our briefs. And I suspect there'll be briefs written not only on behalf of the commission by our firm, but on behalf of some of the neighbors who will be intervening in this matter as well. So that detail will, will be in front of a court. There's no question about that. And then of course, after that, there's oral argument. So so anyway, that's, that's, you know, something that's going to happen. So while detail is a great thing, it will be there. It will be in front of the judge in the form of the brief. Whether it's in the resolution per se or not, as long as the resolution references the reasons and goes through the analysis that you have to go through in an eight thirty G application, then we fill in the, the details and the blanks through the, through the brief process by making references to the record. And as I said, the record is the, all the exhibits that have been submitted, along with the transcript of the hearings. So every comment that was made to the commission is included in those transcripts. And we'll be, we'll be able to reference those and cite those specifically to the court.
So it, it seems what all of us commissioners need to be comfortable with is reasons for denial under eight thirty G. Your top line points have been incorporated in here.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's what was attempted. Now there's obviously, you know, other things. I mean, Commissioner Engel pointed out sightlines on Weed Street. I, I think that's a valid, I think that's something that's valid to be put in here. That's not in there, even the stacking considerations. The sewer, keep in mind that the sewer is under the jurisdiction of the WPCA. So we, there's not a whole lot that the, that the Planning and Zoning Commission can do with respect to the sewer, because the WPCA has already determined. Well, first of all, they denied the extension, of course, and then they determined that there's capacity, ample, sufficient capacity in the, in the sewer system. Obviously in hundred year storms, there's going to be issues. But, but the sewer is really under the jurisdiction of the WPCA. And I, to me, it's, it's, it's important to, to sort of stay in our own lane as the, as the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that is to deal with the issues that, that the Planning and Zoning Commission has jurisdiction over, which is a lot of what you're talking about. But some of the stuff like the sewer, maybe not. Wetlands, yes, to some extent, not to the extent that we're regulating an activity. But we can talk about the impact on wetlands and the impact of, of the, the lack, I'll say, of a storm management, a sufficient storm management proposal to protect the wetlands, the river, and ultimately Long Island Sound. If, if some of you have read through this, by the way, I'll just mention this so it's not confusing because there's a typo in here. On that, on page, just so it's clear when you're reading through it. On page eight of the draft resolution, in the first full paragraph that starts as noted, there's a reference to a statute that should be eight dash three, parentheses, G, parentheses, one, parentheses, A, not actually, it's eight dash two, parentheses, G, one, A, not thirty G, it's two. That was a fingers being used to, I think, type eight thirty G. It should be eight dash two, parentheses, G, parentheses, one, parentheses, capital A. So anyway, just so when you read through that, you'll, you won't be confused. But so, yes, John, Commissioner, Chairman Goodwin, in response to your inquiry, we're trying to make sure that the resolution is limited to planning and zoning considerations and public interests that affect public health, safety, and other matters that the commission may consider, which some of those matters are in this resolution. Dealing with specifically things like buffers and landscaping. And those are specifically authorized in the general statutes as things that the Planning and Zoning Commission can consider and, and the relationship between those and public health. So as long as there's a relationship to public health or safety and the commission makes a determination that those concerns outweigh the need for affordable housing, then that's the, that's the job of the commission. And then to determine if there's any way, any changes that can be made to the project that might fix those concerns. So it, like I said, detail is good, detail will be provided to the court through the, through the briefing process. Just so the commission is comfortable that if something is not in the resolution, but it's related to one of the things we're talking about, it's, it's going to be in the brief.
Okay. Thank you, Pete.
Pete, I have a question regarding the mitigation piece that you were just mentioning. I mean, I see each of these sections under determination and balancing. You know, there's a statement about what the commission finds the project could do to better rectify the issues that are being identified there. Is that sufficient? Is that as much as we need to do? Or do we need to be saying more there in terms of what could be changed or should be changed? I don't know.
If there's, yeah, yeah. If there's more that you think can be done, you could certainly reference it. Keep in mind that under the eight thirty G statute, rather than taking an appeal within the appeal period, the applicant can re-submit an application to the commission within the 15 day appeal period that attempts to respond to the, to the issues raised by the commission in its denial. So to the extent you're, you're indicating what might happen, it gives the applicant a little bit of a roadmap to determine, you know, what they may or may not be able to do if they come back with another application during the 15 day appeal period. So it's, it's in, that's why it's important for the commission to indicate, and it doesn't have to be in real specific terms, real detailed terms, but at least the commission needs to indicate if they believe there's anything that can be done to solve the problem. So now it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be reasonable changes that keep the project viable. That's kind of a little bit of a subjective determination. And if it's not something an applicant can live with, then they're going to say that's not reasonable. But that's ultimately up to the applicant if they decide to come back to the commission with, with changes.
And Pete, that.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's Krista, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's despite the fact that, for example, Krista specifically said to her attorney Hollister, will you? Krista specifically said to her attorney Hollister, will you consider less units? He said, no.
Right.
Will you consider additional affordable housing units? He said, no. I mean, they've already specifically said no to
They have.
Gilson suggested as potential revisions, conditions, however you want to term it.
Yep, they have said, they have said no, but I don't think that relieves of relieves the commission of the obligation to determine if there are any changes, whether the applicant's willing to do them or not is a different is a different question, but I think it's incumbent on the commission if there are things that can be done um to suggest what those things might be.
So I guess
Even if the, even if he's already said, nah, we're not doing that.
So for instance, just in terms of my try, me trying to understand what level of specificity specificity we're going for here for under fire safety. Um, it says the commission finds that a substantial reduction in the height of the building coupled with a smaller building footprint could substantially improve fire safety. So I mean, if that's good, fine, or do we need to say something like a building below forty feet tall? Like, do we actually put in numbers or do we just leave it generic like that?
I listen, I there's no, there's either either way is is fine. If the commission feels more comfortable being more precise, um they can do that. It's not the commission's job to redesign the project for the applicant. That's not what the statute requires. Simply requires the commission to identify changes that might um alleviate the concerns that the commission has with respect to health and safety. So uh I don't know that you need to get into that detail. Um, you can um but but it's, I don't think it's it's necessary to satisfy your statutory obligation.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the attorney, if I may.
Sure.
Um, is a, is it possible that an an appeal will not be an appeal in the sense of you're sitting in a court, but that a judge may say uh I'm going to appoint a retired judge to sit down and you're going to sit and you two would have put you in a room and would have central marriage counseling to try to come to an accommodation. Is that a possible outcome of any kind of appeal as opposed to a more judicial type of procedure?
Yeah, it is possible to have a mediation. You know, in one of the hearings, Attorney Hollister kind of made a, I'll call it a cynical remark because he talked about the W P C A appeal and he and he said it in front of in front of this commission. But he talked about the W P C A appeal and he and uh he said that mediation had been offered and the town declined and his comment was, and I remember it very clearly, unbelievable. And that, you know, the saying basically was unbelievable that we didn't agree to mediation in the W P C A appeal. Well, we could have gone to mediation. But in the case of the W P C A appeal, I'm not sure what there is to mediate. Either the sewer is extended or the sewer is not extended. The W P C A elected not to extend the sewer because they had an alternate method of disposing of their um solid waste, their sewer waste. So um there wasn't really anything to mediate there in this in this application in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, there very well may be um something worth mediating. I don't know yet. But but um yes, that could happen. There could be a mediation. Now, mediation is a settlement conference. It doesn't result in a in a a judgment necessarily unless the parties agree and we stipulate to uh something and and judgment gets entered. We can do that, by the way, without mediation. We don't need a court to to discuss settlements and resolutions. That can happen whether whether we mediate through a through a retired judge uh or justice, or whether we uh do it on our own. So nothing precludes those discussions from occurring. So um but the but that happens in the context of an actual appeal. That's, you know, that's a, that's something that the the trial judge will suggest to the parties that won't mandate it, but it'll suggest to the parties. Parties agree to do that mediation, they can do it.
What I'm hearing um sir is that whether it is appealed, whether there's an appeal of the appeal, which may occur or a mediation, the type of document that this commission should most appropriately provide would be the same regardless of any of those possible outcomes. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, because remember the mediation only arises if there is an appeal. A mediation's not an alternate, an alternative to an appeal. It's it's done in the context of an appeal where a judge, the trial judge says, you know, let's see if you guys can work something out. Maybe somebody can help you do it. But that's only after an appeal has been taken.
Thank you.
I just have one question on just clarification on item fourteen of the findings on page three. And maybe I'm just not reading this correctly or uh it where it talks about the um the level of uh affordable housing that we have here in the town as well as the regional and municipal, regional versus municipal and how much, you know, the county of Fairfield could be tabulated at. Um, the par, the the sentence in the right in the middle. Additionally, the applicant's attorney advised the commission that it was necessary to determine the need for affordable housing on a regional rather than municipal basis. Isn't it the opposite? Isn't the opposite the argument of the applicant that we need to, the whole reason for this application is that it needs to be determined on a municipal basis, not a regional basis?
So, no, the, well, the applicant's attorney and and, you know, everybody's free to go back and listen to this, but I thought um we had all sort of agreed that the applicant made a comment um that that affordable housing is a is a regional concern, not just a purely local, meaning New Canaan.
So what, yeah, so what happened was it was in his summation right at the end of the hearing.
Yeah, I heard it too.
And which, and this blew me away because I completely agree with the applicant.
Yeah, I agree with that too. We all do.
Basically, basically, he said is the need for affordable housing should be examined on a regional basis. So therefore, what that says to me is we, what 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 towns do we neighbor uh border? Stanford, Norwalk, Parryan. But specifically Stanford and Norwalk.
And I think we all heard that, John, but I, as I said to um Lynn earlier, um, we, I I I, that's my recollection. I haven't read that. I haven't looked at um a tape or anything to to find that exact language, but that's my recollection, John. I know it's your recollection. And it was Lynn's recollection, but I think we ought to verify that. That's why this is strictly a draft resolution at this point.
I I I think too, as a matter of eight thirty G, that that's a losing argument um for the town of New Canaan because the eight thirty G laws, it's written, applies to a municipality. Notwithstanding what the attorney may have said, and and I heard that too. But I I think for us to spend time on that, I don't object to it being in here. But I I think we should really focus on the matters that I believe are applicable, you know, which are health, safety and damage to critical infrastructure, because those are the ones which are likely to carry at the end of the day.
Yes, and Dan, I agree with that, but the what that, what the regional aspect um goes to is the need for affordable housing because the need um, you know, may be satisfied beyond because it is a balancing test. So if, for example, if if there was an affordable housing development proposed in a in a small town that was surrounded by urban areas uh that had plenty of affordable housing, an argument could be made that, well, wait a minute, it doesn't need to be here because it's it's available. You know, it's here. It's not in our, the boundaries of our town, but it's here and it meets the need uh of people who 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 require help and need affordable housing. So it really only applies, I think, in the balancing test, but I I don't disagree with you. I wouldn't, I wouldn't focus on it. This is a New Canaan decision. So it it, so again, um that's something that I think we ought to, we ought to look at.
I did hear that comment and uh at the end, as as you did, sir, and the chairman. And I was surprised I happened to agree with it and that you think about it, you know, even having certain buildings being affordable is a bit condescending and paternalistic. You know, who am I to tell some person of modest means, well, if you want a affordable housing, you have to be in this building. You know, it's it's easier simply to say, well, here's a housing voucher and you can determine where you want to live. I'm not going to live your life for you and you can live where you wish. This will provide the financial means of doing that. And uh, you know, live a life the way you want. Maybe you want to live here and live there because it's closer to mom or near something else. It's for you to decide, and I think that's an easier way, but I'm not making these judgments, but
You should run for the legislature.
I think that would be better, but uh anyway, that's me. But um, enough.
Um, I have a question, I I guess, for everybody um on the section about pedestrian safety and then it says the for the finding or I guess the recommendation for mitigation, I'm on page nine. The commission finds that a reasonable plan, the installation of sidewalks on the north side of Elm Street could substantially improve pedestrian safety. If I I I mean, I'm looking at the site plan now and I thought they were providing um a sidewalk on the north side of Elm Street, so I'm confused.
They are providing a sidewalk on the north side of Elm Street. They are not providing anything on Weed Street. Then you, it's a good thing you brought this up because that was something that I had focused on during our discussions with the applicant was it seems almost contradictory for the reason for the sidewalk, right? The reason for the sidewalk is to encourage pedestrian circulation back into the center of town, back to the train station um for commuting purposes. Um, yet the only way to get to the south side sidewalk that takes you into town is you have to exit the back of the building, come across the drive aisle and the and the uh uh and the garage entrance, come across the new sidewalk on the north side going west all the way to the corner, then cross over, then come back into town. Again, common sense, that's never going to happen. Everyone's going to be jockeying across traffic to get to the sidewalk on the other side to get to town when they're late for the train. So it's
Yeah, and by the way, I think what we meant there was the the sidewalk on the north side of Elm Street is, it only exists from the from the driveway to Weed Street.
Correct.
I see what you're saying.
So so it, in other words, pedestrians going into town do not have a sidewalk until unless they cross uh Elm Street.
Exactly.
Okay, I see. I think that just needs to be clarified, what we're saying.
Yeah. Yeah.
And there's no way to cross uh Weed Street, which has a green link, has a sidewalk, and there's no uh crosswalk uh identified on their plans. So basically, the it's a free-for-all. Everybody just, you know, play Frogger and run across wherever you can.
It's it's kind of the same logic, right? If you follow it through, if someone's going on the green link or going to Irland Park or going north on Weed Street as a pedestrian coming from this complex, they are not going to walk all the way down to the corner of Weed Street to cross over to come back. They're going to go out the driveway entrance on the north end and dash across Weed Street. That's, that's what's going to happen.
Icy eats Weed Street in the winter.
And and that's the exact spot where the dip is, that you cannot see coming. That's the exact spot. And I don't know if a judge or somebody from not in town would know that the exact spot where pedestrians will cross the busiest uh fastest road is the spot where they can't be seen.
Some judges will do a site visit, um John. Some some judges do do site visits, not all of them, but some do. It also happens that the, it also happens that the uh land use uh judge um is a former resident of a canyon, so.
Well, I don't always drive that suburban. Sometimes I drive this really small car that can't see over that hump, so I encourage him to come and drive in my little car on that day and see that he can, what he can't see.
Well, is it something that should be pointed out in the resolution then? Or does it end up in the brief if there's litigation?
I mean, I'll I'll attempt to write up the 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 sightlines uh for Lynn and then we'll go try and find the references from the experts on that one bit of testimony, but I'll I'll write up what I what I experienced because I go through that intersection six times a day. I go, you know, to work, back home to lunch, back into work, back home. Couple errands. Through that intersection a lot.
Anybody else? Yeah, I I do thi, look, this has been thrown at this, this has been thrown at us tonight. Um, you know, as I'm listening, I'm talking my ideal objective of a vote on Tuesday probably doesn't happen. Maybe we can strive for it. But I do think we all you know, in a perfect world and just didn't have the bandwidth to get there, is the kind of thing where we would have gotten it, say, on a Friday and, you know, review it over the weekend, so.
Mr. Chairman, a technical question. If we, this commission is not able to come to conclusion on seven fifty-one weed at our next meeting. Uh, what are the notice periods we have, we will need for a special meeting?
I think, um, what is it, Lynn?
Twenty-four hours. Twenty-four hours.
That's been necessary.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Because, you know, you know, look, you're right, and what we couldn't can do is Tuesday could be another, you know, let's say hypothetically, uh not hypothetically, let's say, I mean, Lynn's got like a zillion things to do, but if we could get another draft by the weekend, then we can, you know, each put, you you guys may have different bandwidth than I do, but that's when, you know, that's when I work on these things.
Yeah.
And then we can talk about a Tuesday, then we could finalize it, and we could end up having a special meeting, which quite frankly, may not even have to be all that long. So, you know, the good news about having Zoom nowadays is it could be a hundred percent Zoom meeting. If it's just meeting a a due date, so that could be another option.
I would concur, Mr. Chairman. It'd be nice to have a a new draft in time for the weekend because during the workday, it's tricky.
Yeah. You know, I mean, there's, Pete, you bring up the issue of, you know, the commission should provide, you know, guidance as to you know, what's an alternative acceptable project, you know, it's it's I think what the commission concluded was if it's anything approaching a huge building. Um, and once again, the applicant said no to a bunch of things, but if it's anything approaching a huge building, which is taking up most of the footprint, I think what you all said a month ago or whenever we last talked was we just don't get there. And as I think about it, if it's something the applicant submitted pictures of what an affordable housing development would look like in a suburban area and, you know, and I'm on record as saying this before, is conceivably that's something that could work. I think that then the challenge for the applicant is the applicant determines it's not profitable enough for the applicant. So why should he provide affordable housing? Um, but that's, you know, as I look at it, and the other thing that I look at is across the street. As that's a great example of, you know, what a project would look like.
I I I I think you're right. Um, if you're, if we're prepared to be a little bit more explicit right now, somebody an out-of-towner would look at our regulations and say that commission, uh I could interpret their their denial as strictly speaking one acre zone, and that's what, that's all they'll allow. And I don't think that that's what we're signaling. While one building of a hundred and two units uh is what we're denying, there's something in between one unit per acre and a hundred and two units that we would accept. And if and if what that means is a reduction, I think you mentioned of height and of breaking it into multiple buildings, then it would look a whole lot more as the commission, as the chairman just said, uh, the two um multi-unit developments across the street on Elm Street. Hathaway, not Hathaway.
Pride's Crossing.
Pride's Crossing, which is fifty fifty-two units.
Fifty-one units on five point three acres.
Fifty, okay, for the record, fifty-one units on five point three acres. And then the other one was Hatfield Muse, which is roughly fourteen or so units, somewhere around there. And I'm not sure how many acres.
Well, and just for, you know, for the sake of the commission, so Pride's Cross, I mean, I have a, I made a little spreadsheet here. I'm not just talking off the top of my head. Um, Pride's Crossing comes out to nine point six dwelling units per acre. So if you were to do that level of if you were to do that level of density on the site that the applicant has, that would be about thirty units.
Thirty units, yeah.
I mean, so obviously substantially less than a hundred and two, substantially more than one or three, I guess, is what they could actually technically build on a three acre lot.
I, I, for one, think it's important to say that we're willing to do more than what the regulations allow, which is single, you know, s- s- single unit.
But we shouldn't be, we, we.
We shouldn't be designing it.
We shouldn't be designing it for them, right? If this was, if this was an applicant and an application that was looking to get input on initial design, that ship has sailed, right? We've got, you know, Urban Stanford on Washington Boulevard on the corner of Weed. And there is no real compromise to that. It's, it's, you just deny that, right? That's not going to. But, but we can provide feedback in terms of what we would like to see in terms of, let's call it a redesign, right? Smaller scale, less units per acre, better sidewalk circulation, better vehicular, all, all the things that are going into this without actually defining what those modifications are. Just give the parameters of it or the request of, of what we're looking for. It should be up to the applicant to satisfy them.
And keep in mind, I think this probably goes without saying, but excuse me, it wouldn't be legal for the commission to deny an eight thirty G application simply on the basis that it doesn't comply with our zoning regulations. That's, that's not the standard. So, and I, I, I think everybody understands that.
But, but, but Pete, but I think what, you know, Dan has said, what the discussion is what could get us comfortable from a health, safety, welfare perspective.
Right. Agreed. Agreed. Yep.
We cited, we've cited the, the findings and the issues that we have when it comes to health, life, safety, et cetera. And we can identify moves that would help to lessen that burden of the issues that currently exist, modify them in such a way that would be much, much better for health and life safety, et cetera, without specifically designing anything or, you know, giving a particular ratio or anything that we look to meet. We can just cite examples. We're not, we're not trying to apply, we, we're all fully aware that the current zoning code, you know, they're never, never going to go by that, right? It's a one acre zone where they're looking for higher density. We all understand that. We're also looking for something that could achieve higher density without completely obliterating the neighborhood and the, the infrastructure and the safety of the, of the surrounding area.
The de facto subsidy of eight thirty G is enormous density becomes allowed. Main one, as well as some other design features. And folks tend to want to maximize use of all subsidies.
Yeah.
Sort of Econ one oh one. And this is the, I think, one of the challenges here. That isn't, it's a de facto subsidy being provided. They, they don't have to comply with any number of zoning rules specifically. And so I, while I have sympathy for Commissioner Radman's comment, I, 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 I just wonder how tempting that is.
But they have to provide it in a, a way that is safe.
Understood. And we are citing any number of issues that I think this commission is believe, believes in its, in its heart of hearts are challenges to health and safety. When I say health and safety, I mean, health and safety in a very real sense. And those are very proper issues for this commission. I think the overwhelming issues for this commission, most anything we do is health and safety. We don't want to threaten that. And also ones that are relevant to an eight thirty G.
Well, and I think that it is possible. I mean, we just saw it on Burtis. It is possible to do a project and exercise some restraint. I mean, Burtis didn't go to the max of what they're allowed to do and still found a way to include some affordable housing and make, make it profitable. So I don't, I understand that there's always going to be that temptation, John. I just, I don't think you have to take it.
I would agree. They don't have to, but I'm not sure. I just wonder if that's going to happen. You know, eight thirty G encourages maximizing the subsidy.
Right.
Frankly, why give it up?
Well, so is if is it worthwhile to provide some direction in the denial?
I, I think it's sufficient to point out the, with all the facts that you've got in your spreadsheet, the two projects that you admire, which are so close, you know, on the same block. And I think those are the most relevant. And, and if they are nine units per acre, that's a relevant fact. And so without denying it, you know, I think that's a relevant fact. And and if you want, we could vote on whether that's a, a, something that only the chairman admires, or we all collectively admire and we could, you know.
This is.
Put it in the document.
This is Commissioner Casavant. May I comment on that, please? I, I would suggest to you that comparing this to the densities of the other units is in fact, not a sensible thing to do. The reason for that is that eight thirty G was enacted well after the presence of those units. And in fact, I would submit to you that if in fact, either of the projects that Krista referred to earlier were proposed to us today, we might have the same concerns about health and safety and traffic for those units. As a private citizen, before I joined the Planning and Zoning Commission, I spoke publicly at the public hearing with respect to the view, arguing at that point that we should be requiring affordable housing in that project. I think that we as a commission need to have a clear and unambiguous position about health and safety. We shouldn't be redesigning a project. And I don't think we win by comparing it to other projects, which I don't think we would approve today on the same grounds. We go down a very slippery slope when we say, you know, Hatfield Muse at fifty-one units per whatever it is, is acceptable. We don't know that. We, we can't weigh that. We haven't done a traffic survey. We haven't even done a sewer survey, right? We only know it's there. So, so just my suggestion here is that we, and I'm basing this on what Attorney Gelderman said a few moments ago, is we just be clear that as a commission, as we prepare for the brief writing that is going to have to be probably done by the attorneys, that we're clear about the concerns. And our concerns are the ones that have to be germane to eight thirty G. And to me, the only relevant features are that this is a risk to health and safety of the community for a variety of reasons, which we've cited ad nauseam. And I, I, I think that trying to build a logical case here is going to only lead us to trouble when, if in fact, we do get to a mediation or discussion.
You're here.
Well, I, I don't know. I, I same, I, I hear, hear, but the same legal counsel is advising us that we should propose conditions, alternatives. So, I mean, look, if you all want to go out with an outright denial, so be it, but.
And I'm not saying that we have to limit ourselves to what was built in nineteen sixty-eight on Elm Street and say, that's the standard. And I'm not saying that, that we would approve Pride's Crossing today. I'm not saying either of those things. I'm saying that we should provide in the record what the densities are of those proximate projects. We should go look at Burtis Avenue, a project that we approved this month and use those as support of the, of the argument that this commission is sensitive to the need for greater density in order to accomplish affordable housing objectives. So I agree with the chairman that any data we can provide as to what we would or might approve is, is going to be looked favorably by a judge on appeal, that we are not stuck with, it's not safe. And it's not healthy and therefore, no, we're way, we're way past just no. We're willing to work with the applicants as we just demonstrated on Burtis Avenue. And we should indicate that in our response.
I would concur with Commissioner Casavant. I don't think we need to cross that bridge now. Ultimately, a judge is going to say the, assuming we vote for rejection, the, and the terms of that rejection are appropriate reasons to reject an eight thirty G development. That's all they're going to look at. If they see otherwise, then we can deal with these types of issues. I don't want to put the cart before the horse here. And I think we may be doing that.
Well, I, I would.
That's my view.
I would, I heard a legal counsel and I know I've been accused of deferring to legal counsel too much in the past, but.
Never, never.
I mean, Pete, do you have a, you have a view?
Yeah, I do. I do. Keep in mind that one of the statutory obligations of the commission under eight thirty G is to determine if reasonable changes to the proposed development could be made to protect, you know, safety and, and health, basically public interests. And, but it's if, the answer could be no. The answer to that can be the commission absent a total redesign of the project. It, you know, does not see what reasonable changes could be made. You could add particularly in light of the, of the statement by the applicant's attorney, that they would not consider any of those changes as the changes that Krista asked about, reducing the height, reducing the number of units, increasing the number of affordable units. The answers, the answers to all those questions were no. So in light of that, the commission could, I'm just, I'm not telling what the, telling the commission what to do. I'm just saying you could make a finding that the commission doesn't see any reasonable changes that could be made to the proposed development that would, that would satisfy these, you know, these issues. So again, I'm just, but it is incumbent on the, the commission to make a determination if those changes exist. Maybe they do, maybe they don't. That's up to the commission. But you don't have to redesign the project. Okay. The silence I'm hearing is not good.
Pete thought. Yeah.
I, yeah, what, what I heard him say was if, if the applicant is willing and, and interested in hearing that, you know, what we think, then we'll go down that path and we'll start to think about, you know. But as John Chris just said, and, and, and he said, we don't have to design it. Nobody's asked us to design it. So until somebody asks us, you know, what's possible, you know, we, we're not going to put it in this document.
Okay. I think, I suspect Commissioner Nielsen would disagree a little bit. But, but I think.
I'm going to follow legal counsel.
Well, okay.
Well, remember, all I'm doing or trying to do is tell the commission what the law says, not, I don't want to tell the commission what to do.
No, we know. And, and we know that. Commissioner Turner, you haven't weighed in on this. Do you have a view?
You know, I agree with the discussion. I, I don't think that there's any need to redesign this application. I think, you know, I think we're pretty well in agreement that we're not going to approve it. And, you know, let's cut to the chase.
I mean, look, the only point I'll make is, you know, I think we have a consensus here or a majority, I should say. The only point I'll make is there's a difference between giving the applicant a redesign and giving the applicant a sense of what could be acceptable to the commission. So, you know, that said, okay, you know, I guess we continue to go down the road of.
I think we, I think we go down the road of, of pure denial, purely based on the fact that our concerns associated with fire safety, pedestrian safety, all of these items, stormwater management, vehicular safety, all revolve around the density of the project, the scale and density of the project.
They do.
But, oh, I, and design of the project and design of the project.
And I, by the, you know, for the record, I agree a hundred and ten percent.
And to Krista's questioning of Attorney Hollister, the applicant is clear in stating that they are not reducing the number of units and they are not redesigning the project. It's a simple.
They're not really interested in the, what would it take?
Right. So then the denial is easy. The applicant's already said, I'm not going down that route. Okay. Then here's our reason for denial.
I think we should say that.
That, that's what I was going to, Lynn, this needs to be. I keep saying resolution, whatever the right term is, but this needs to be in there.
Okay. And just to clarify, Mr. Radman, do you mean instead of density, that the mass of the project, because whether it's the size of that building on that site, so whether they put seven units in there or a hundred units of that building is that size, it's the mass of that building on the site.
I'll email you separately on this, but I'll bring it up now. So the fire safety component of it, there's a, there's a specific element in here that's missing, which is the apparatus required to service this building in a fire and emergency, right? We, the fire chief and our consultants got up there and said, and I'm paraphrasing slightly here, is the reason due to the scale and massing of the building and due to the reach ranges associated with the design of the site and the building, we have to reach out to a third party town, in this case, Westport, to use their apparatus, which is large enough to service this building in a fire emergency, but their response time is three times longer than the required amount of eight minutes, right? So now we're putting everyone at risk because of the design and scale of the building and what it takes to fight a fire there. And we, we explicitly compared that to Kane and Parrish, where that is a very different solution, where you have full three hundred sixty accessibility due to the circular rate, circulation on that site and, and accessibility from all sides of the buildings, that it can be serviced differently. So it goes to the fire, life, safety element, the, the scale and the, and the size and density of the building goes plays towards that fire, life, safety.
I would also concur with that, Commissioner Radman, and also note, it's also the design, the access to the courtyard for suppression and rescue.
Right.
It was the chief who said there would be a challenge with cars, whether they're parked correctly or not. So the, the basic design is saying we can't get in there. There are going to be cars. I would never assume cars would be parked correctly, at least. I never see it very often. So you have to assume at least, maybe in a worst case scenario, but a fairly bad case scenario, those are other issues. As, as far as sort of leading them to a, to an answer is, is really, you address the objections we have and we can talk. So address the objections we have and we'll talk. Bring a design that addresses this. Happy to hear it.
Lynn, I would say to your question of is it the massing or the density or both? I think it, I think it is both. I mean, to your point, that building would probably be problematic if it was seven units or if it's a hundred and two units. But I think the number of units in that building is what's driving the number of parking spots. And the number of parking spots is what's driving the amount of impervious surface. And the amount of impervious surface is what's driving the stormwater runoff. And it's just this downhill trickle. So I, I do think the number of units is something that is also somewhat problematic. It's not just the scale of the building, although that in and of itself is problematic, but the number of units is driving a lot of other factors that become problems.
In another point, too, I think that we should absolutely include the questions which Krista posed to the applicant about their willingness to adjust the plan. Even deeper affordability, for example, as opposed to going to eighty percent, driving towards sixty or forty would be of interest to this committee. So as we write this piece, we should note that the commission specifically queried the applicant on their willingness to make those adjustments. And the applicant said, no, thank you.
I, I would note that the design of the building is going to be, I think it's, if I'm wrong, someone, but about half one, one bedroom and half two bedroom. So it's not a lot of three or four, but large ones, because you make money on smaller ones, because you just do. The marginal rent you can get for a third bedroom is not as much as using that for a, for a separate unit. And this creates again, more parking. So in other words, you start with the issue of, I don't want to go into structural. So in other words, you start with the issue of, I don't want to go into structural steel. I'm gonna make it a stick building. I'm gonna make that as big as I can. And given the number of parking spaces, I absolutely have to have. And given things I can't build on because it's a wetland or it's a something else, you know, how much can I cram onto this spot? And I think this is essentially what the design of the building is. How can I maximize every square inch? And if you look at the design, there's not a lot of green space, there's not a lot of borders. Uh, it's, let's densify it as much as possible. And I think that's what they want. You asked them, they said no.
Well, and just so the commission's clear, I mean, part of my thought process in asking those questions, and, and frankly, this also goes back to fifty-one Main Street as well, is, you know, if we're doing this weighing process, it's like, okay, yeah, we have built fifty-foot buildings over at Canaan Parish. Those are a hundred percent affordable, you know, for forty years. So, you know, what are we getting for what we're giving up? And that's, that's why I was asking those questions. And frankly, if you give us more, maybe we can give you more, right? Like, and that, that was the weighing process I was trying to get to in my own mind. So that's why I asked them.
Okay, anybody else?
One further point, too, on, on, um, Canaan Parish, because Nycha is the developer, we're not going to have forty-year affordability. We'll get them ninety-nine-year affordability.
Hmm, that's a good point. How many years, nine?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine.
Or, or perpetual as a matter of reality.
Yeah.
Hmm, we're bang for the buck.
Right. Again, you gave up something and you got something in return.
It's a totally different location than this location.
So how do we get to Tuesday?
We're not going to, I don't think, I don't think so. Um, you know, what I, I suggest is Lynn and Pete, you guys give it the best shot. Maybe what you do, well, I was gonna say, maybe what you do is you, you give us your la- latest draft. Yeah, that's still a good idea. Why don't you try to get us your, your latest and best draft by close of business Friday? Um, chances are, we don't make a decision Tuesday, but at least we can look at it over the weekend and then we can, you know, have a productive session on Tuesday and then we'll make a call there. How's that sound?
In, in part in that comment, Mr. Chairman, would be that would be committed upon the commissioners to share any specific comments with the zoning staff by, let's say, close business tomorrow so that they can draft this in as complete a way as possible.
Completely agree.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Pete, Lynn, uh, you guys good? Do you have what you need?
Yes, I do, subject to whatever additional information we get. I'm on trial tomorrow, um, but I'll have Friday to work on this, so.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, everybody. This meeting's adjourned.